Good morning, members, and to the public here as well in the gallery, and to our viewing public watching through social media and television. The chair will now call this first day, first special session into order dated Friday, April 5, 2024. And at this time, if we can stand for a moment of silence. Thank you, members. At this time, Madam Clerk, please go to the room.
Representative Fatah. Representative Fodan. Representative Fatow.
Present.
Senator Bobota.
Present.
Representative Benavente.
Gaya.
Representative Komatsu Angelo.
Present.
Representative Komatsu Diego.
Present.
Representative Komatsu Joelle.
Gaya.
Representative Komatsu Senti.
Present.
Representative Castro. Senator Delion Guerrero.
Here.
Representative Flores Joseph. Representative Flores Marisa. Senator Magovnia.
Gaya.
Representative Manglonia. Representative Omar.
Present.
Representative Probs.
Present.
Chairman Sablan.
Estiga.
Representative Villagomez.
Hello.
Representative Yanktemai. Representative Yumo. Mr. Chairman, we have 15 members present, six members absent.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have 15 members present. We have duly established a quorum. Please take note that Representative Marisa Flores, Representative Manny Castro, Representative TJ Manglonia, Representative Joseph Flores, Representative Roy Ada, and Representative Dinita Yanktemai are hereby excused on today's order of business. Thank you, members. Moving along in our order of business, we are now on item B, reading an approval of the journal. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we have one SNY journal number 2311, first day, third regular session, dated February 7, 2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and at this time, I recognize the floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. And now for motion to adopt SNY journal 2311, first day, third regular session, dated February 7, 2024. So move.
There is a motion offered by our floor leader for the adoption of SNY journal 23-11. It has been seconded. Discussion on the motion. Ready? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Journal adopted. Moving along, we are now on item C, public comments, and at this time, the chair will open the podium for any of our members of the public who are here in the gallery that wishes to make comments. Please state your name for the record, and if you can, provide your testimony based on what's reflective on today's order of business. At this time, the podium is open, and you have five minutes.
Buenos dias, Lisor. I'll see June Coleman, Executive Director of 500 Sales, here on behalf of our organization requesting assistance and funding for one of our innovative beach canoe programs, where we're really setting out to rebrand our islands as a unique and special destination that was recognized through many centuries for its sailing and traditional canoes. And we feel that this opportunity that we're providing is something that is equivalent to a great lifetime memory for our visitors as well as our community here. It's an integral part to realize that the traditions of our past are really viable solutions for our future, especially in the tourism industry, and that's what we're requesting help with to help establish this rebranding of our islands. And it's taking great traction already with the pilot project. Thanks to the help of MVA, Hand Me, Wella Foundation, we've been able to take quite a bit, a number of people out, and the experience is all reflected. Very, very enlightening, refreshing, and as many of them have stated, probably the best activity they enjoyed while being here in Saipan. I invite any and all of you, if you haven't already tried our traditional canoes. It's something that will really empower you and give you a good sense of our cultural identity, and will help you to understand that promoting this type of experience is going to benefit all aspects and all industries within the CNMI, not just tourism, but even for businesses, for the education system. All of these things are going to be greatly benefited by the work that we're doing, and we ask for your support for this project. We have some data to pass out, and just so you can get a glimpse of some of the things that are happening out there. We have a lot of support from people, but you know, it does take some funding to carry out, to help our sailors and the captains, and just the program maintenance of the vessels, all these kind of things. For the most part, we've been operating without charging. So anyway, take a look at those things. I believe we sent out letters with regards to the requests over a month ago. If you didn't get a letter, we'll be sure to get one to you. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer any of them, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. The podium is still open for anyone here in the gallery that wishes to make comments. Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, representatives and senators. My name is Gloria Kavanaugh. I'm Vice President of Marianas Elent, as well as the Chair of MVA. We've been working with this group, 500 Sales, for many, many years. Actually, I'm really proud to say that I was also part of MVA when they first started, and they asked for funding, and it was something that we were convinced would make a difference. Years later, they're doing just this program at Hyatt in front of the beach and already making some traction, and then started to go bigger with doing two beaches, which is Crown and Hyatt, in which the participation rate has grown tremendously. It's not only when the visitors come here, but it's also a very good tool to promote the island when we're out, whether or not in Korea, Japan, or anywhere else. I believe we even presented it when we went to Australia, when we went to Malaysia, when we go to ADEX, you know? It actually has become a tool that our offshore offices, as well as our headquarters, uses in order to promote the island. You know, for many, many years, I've been involved in tourism here, and it's always been explained and asked, you know, why or how are we going to promote our culture? You know, I think that this program is very successful, but we need to make sure that it continues on. You know, we always understand that, you know, money is going to be the issue, and this year especially, money is really hard to come around. But, you know, I believe that if you are looking at the programs that you do consider, you know, that this is one of those programs that are really worthwhile, not only for our people here in the CNMI, but also for our tourists that come here. Right now, it's a pilot program, so they don't charge. You know, they will charge, but it's going to be, and it is now, one of those programs that is a must-see, and, you know, it's done so professionally that it's something that we should really be proud of, and your support, you know, is, you know, very much appreciated when it comes to this program. Like I said, MVA, since the inception, or since the idea, before they even brought out or built the first boat, we were on board and we were providing some funding. We had provided some funding this year, but ongoing and in order to make the program even bigger and offer to more and more people, they're going to need continual funding, and so I really would like to ask you to consider helping this organization help the island as a destination. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kavanaugh. Podium is still open.
Hafaid Zantiro, I am honored to be speaking to this august body, and I am speaking, I'm Emma Perez, co-founder of 500 Sales, and I'm also here to speak in support of the Beach Canoe Project. You may have recently received a video this morning. If you do, please get a chance to see it before lunch. First off, I want to pose a question. Hafaidza, what if? My husband Peter and I came here over 10 years ago with a dream of building one Chamorro canoe. Just one, because we found out that Chamoros had canoes, and we didn't know that growing up. And today, four canoes are on their way to Festpac to represent the CNMI, three Chamorro canoes, and one Carolinian canoe, and this is the first time that the CNMI has had this presence. And we should all, as a community, be proud and happy about this, because we didn't do it alone. We did it with all of you, all your children, all your family, all the helpful partners we have here. But anyway, what if? So we had a dream of one canoe, and we wanted to revive something that was lost. But about a year ago, I started thinking, well, what if? What if we had never lost our canoes? What would this community look like right now? And I've asked kids at gatherings that we've had, and we hear things like, well, we would all know how to swim and sail, we would like nature and know more about nature, we'd have more oceanographers, we'd have more people in the Coast Guard, we'd have more people in the Navy, and having more Pacific Islanders in the Navy might help the Navy with some of the decisions that they make. But what if? We would be healthier, there wouldn't be so much diabetes and all that kind of stuff. So we went from a revival dream to a hafaidza dream, and the beach canoes is one of those. We would have, we are in such a unique position here, because we have both the Chamorro maritime traditions that are, again, growing, and the Carolinian. I think we're the only place that has two such wonderful maritime traditions, and this is a unique thing for the CNMI. So the next dream was, okay, let's get 20 canoes on five sites. That would be 70 well-paying maritime jobs, and we're training people through our Cultural Maritime Training Center, which we got funded by ANA. We've had three ANA grants, but they funded the CMTC. So now what we're doing is we're teaching people how to be captains, how to get their merchant marine credentials, and by doing that, which happens to be a drug-free program, we're helping the youth have not only ties to their cultural background, but a good lifestyle. So that's the dream of the beach canoes. In about three years, we want to see that. So this is the pilot project. We've been working with Hyatt, we've been working with Crown and with our other partners to figure out the logistics of it. We've been working with DPL and DCRM to make sure that we're doing it correctly, so that we can fill the lagoons with sails. All the visitors will take pictures of them. It's free marketing. And the people on the canoes are locals, and we're hoping they're young people that will stay. But anyway, I just wanted that hafaidza, think about that. This is not just one project. This is a transformative project. I also wanted to let you know that what we've been seeing as far as the reach of 500 Sales and how it portrays the CNMI, we've been in the LA Times, we've been in the New York Times Magazine, we've been on the BBC, we're seeing reported, lots of reports about Japanese press, and we've been CBS has reached out to us. We're getting the attention of this international press because of the unique and beautiful things that are going on here with our canoes and our people. So we have, we're always being proactive about finding funding. Our boatyard right now is closed down because we're doing a renovation. We got a $1.6 million from EDA to renovate that facility. We are going to have a state-of-the-art boatyard here in the CNMI, possibly the best in the Pacific. So I guess I just want to close with hafaidza, really, think about that, and that the transformative effect, the amount that we have asked for, will provide. Sizus Masih Zangiliso.
Thank you, Ms. Emma Perez. Podium is still open. Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Buenos dias, Leser Muamwe, Amaga Umo Gaan, Chairman and distinguished members of the Saipan Northern Islands Legislative Delegation. Guahu, Si Francis Sablan, I am the Executive Director for the Marianas Alliance of Non-Governmental Organizations, Mas Matungo Nya Como Mango, and I'm here in very strong support of the requests of, by 500 Sales, that is an outstanding member of Mango, along with Hagan Wong, which is also an outstanding member of Mango, and also in strong support of funding requested for the Festpac delegation. Like Emma and June, I am also one of the 100 delegates that will be representing the Commonwealth of the Northern Marianas Islands. Emma and June and five others will be representing the seafarers. I will be the Lone Ranger as a storyteller. So we have outstanding and very talented artisans and leaders of our community representing our beautiful islands. And so if you can, please send all of us and not just a few of us. Sizus Masih.
Thank you, Ms. Sablan.
Hilesao Atahinehin Nihatihan.
Thank you. Podium is still open for anyone here who wishes to make comments.
Congratulations to the 500 Sales on a job well done. Good morning, Hafaid and Tiro Chairman, Jampu Sablon, and honorable members of the Saipan Northern Islands Legislative Delegation. For the record, my name is Jampu B. Rages, Acting Special Assistant under the Office of the Governor. On behalf of Governor Arnold I. Palacios and Lieutenant Governor David M. Apating, I thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today. I am here to extend the administration's appreciation and express our gratitude to you, Chairman Sablon, as well as to your Committee on Judiciary and Government Operations, spearheaded by Edith Delion Guerrero and members, for their time, effort you've all put into reviewing and examining our nominee. This morning, you'll be entertaining SNY Standing Committee Report 23-13, the appointment of Mr. Joseph S. Rius to the CNMI Cannabis Commission, and as always, the administration asks for your favorable consideration. Your untiring effort on entertaining the nominee is just a step forward as the administration complete the vacancies for all boards and commission. Again, Chairman Sablon, and to you, honorable members of this esteemed delegation, Governor Arnold I. Palacios and Lieutenant Governor David M. Apating extends their sincere appreciation for your generous and favorable consideration on behalf of our nominee. Thank you, Sizus Masih Zangiliso.
Thank you, Mr. Rages. The podium is still open to anyone here in the gallery that wishes to make comments. I see that there is no more further public comments, so at this time, we move further down in our order of business, and we move down to item D, introduction of local bills, and at this time, I recognize Senator Corina Magovnia.
Thank you, Chairman. Members, I would like to formally introduce Senate Local Bill 2303 to amend the Nuisance Abatement and Blighted Property Maintenance Act of 2018 and for other purposes. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Magovnia. The floor leader will be referring this local bill to the Committee of Zoning on a later date. There happens to be none further in item D, so we move down to item E, introduction of local resolutions. There happens to be none. We move down to item F, messages from the governor. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we have five. We have Governor's Communication Number 2335 to 2339.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on messages from the governor. I recognize our representative Yumo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to get a status update. Oh, first of all, thank you to the administration for signing Saipan Local Law 2206. However, it's been over a month since the bill was signed into law, and so we need a status update as to what has happened to the funds. As you know, the the fund was intended to be used to clean up Western Garapan District, as well as the lighting issues all over Precinct 3, along Gualorai Crossing, Chinatown street light going into Gold's Gym. That needs to be addressed. As you know, there was a person that got hit there, and because of the lighting issues there, we need to place lights there, as well as the crossing at LJ Street Market. There need to be lighting there. As you know, there's another person that got hit there a while back ago, as well as the most important Garapan School Crossing. That street light there or the crossing light is not in operation, and as you know, there's a lot of almost mishaps over there, so that needs to be addressed. The funding also will address some of Earhart's, Earhart Drive's road going up in Gualorai. There need to be separate funds there to address that issue up there, as well as installation of Hotel, Western Garapan Hotel Street Lights. As you know, if you drive into the Western Garapan District, there's no lights in that area, so that needs to be addressed. Our tourism industry cannot benefit there, because tourists can't even walk through that street. It's too dangerous. And so maybe the Chairman of Ways and Means can follow up on that, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
But can we get a status update, just so we know what's going on?
Thank you, Representative Yumo. So the chair is in communication already with the Secretary of Finance. Apparently, according to the Secretary of Finance, since Saipan Local Law 22-06 was signed into law, the Department of Finance did not create the account for the collections of these local funds. Nonetheless, they are, the Department, Division of Revenue and Tax are now working on all the payments that have been made based on Saipan Local Law 22-06, and those are now referred to the Secretary of Finance. So the chair would make another follow-up today. The good news is that we have noticed from the Division of Revenue and Tax that they have been collecting these fees since the inception and the signing into law of Saipan Local Law 22-06. So I am confident that as soon as we get hold this breakdown from the Division of Revenue and Tax, the Secretary of Finance would be approving this appropriation, and I have also, the chair has also communicated with OMB. And also, the chair has also communicated with OMB. They stand ready to allocate this funding as soon as the Secretary of Finance approves this source of funding. Further discussion on Governor's Communication. Does that answer you, Rep. Yumo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you know, the part of the funds also addresses Shefa, and I believe Shefa was also requesting funding. So if that can be addressed, I know it's on the general fund, but...
Yes, that will be addressed.
Right away. As you know, there's students waiting for those funds, so...
As well as the Saipan Mayor's Office as well will be addressed. Further discussion on Governor's Communication. I recognize Representative Vicente Camacho.
I think I heard Earhart Drive, right? Earhart Drive, yeah. One up in Gualorai, right? We're going to get that done. Yay. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Camacho. Any further on Governor's Communications? Ready? Okay, thank you, members. If there's no further, we move down in our order of business. There happens to be none on Item G, Messages from the Mayors of Saipan and Northern Islands. We move down to Item H, Reports and Communications from Heads of Departments and Agencies. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we have one. Departments and Agencies Communication Number 2311.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on Reports and Communications from Heads of Departments and Agencies. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving along, we are now on Item I, House Communications. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we have 15. House Communication Numbers 2365 to 2379.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on House Communications. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving further down to Item J, Senate Communications. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we have Senate Communication Number 2317.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on Senate Communications. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving down, we are now on Item K, Delegation Matters. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we have four. Delegation Matters Number 2367 to 2370.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on Delegation Matters. Ready? Thank you, members. We move further down on Item L, Miscellaneous Communications. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we have 15. Miscellaneous Communication Numbers 2390 to 23104.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Discussion on Miscellaneous Communications. Ready? Thank you, members. Moving along, we are now on Item M, Reports of Standing Committees. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, we have one. Standing Committee Report Number 2313.
Thank you. And at this time, I recognize the floor leader for the proper motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. I move to adopt Senate, I'm sorry, Standing Committee Report Number 2313. It's now Standing Committee on JGO, reporting on the appointment of Joseph Santos Rios Jr. to serve as a member of the Commonwealth Cannabis Commission, representing the 3rd Senatorial District. Your Committee on JGO recommends the confirmation of Mr. Rios. So moved.
Thank you, floor leader. The floor leader had offered a motion for the confirmation of Mr. Joseph Santos Rios Jr. to serve as a member of the Commonwealth Cannabis Commission. And it has been seconded. Discussion on that motion.
Ready.
Ready? Thank you, members. Madam Clerk, please scold the room.
Representative Aldan? Representative Fatah?
Yes.
Senator Babota?
Yes.
Representative Benaventia?
Ungan.
Representative Camacho Angelo?
Yes.
Representative Camacho Diego?
Yes.
Representative Camacho Joel?
Ungan.
Representative Camacho Vicente?
Yes.
Senator De Leon Guerrero?
Yes.
Senator Magovnia?
Chairman, respectfully recusing myself. Thank you.
Representative Omar?
Ungan.
Representative Probs?
Yes.
Representative Villagomis?
Yes.
Representative Yumo? Mr. Chairman?
Ungan.
Mr. Chairman, 14 members voted yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With 14 members present, voting in affirmative, the confirmation of Mr. Joseph Santos Rios Jr. to serve as a member of the Commonwealth Cannabis Commission is hereby adopted by this delegation. Congratulations, Mr. Rios. And if we can just have a short recess to have a follow-up with the newly confirmed member. We are back in session. And before we enter into a short recess, we were at Item M, Reports of Standing Committees. We now move further down on our order of business. There happens to be none on Reports of Special and Conference Committee. None on Item O, Unfinished Business. There is none on Item P, Resolution Calendar. None on Item Q, Bill Calendar. We move down now to Item R, Miscellaneous Business. Are there any miscellaneous business? Ready? Thank you, members. Moving along, we are now on Item S, Announcement. Is there any announcement? Recognize Representative Diego Vincent Camacho.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just sharing an invitation to the viewing public for the 25th anniversary of Dadad Middle School and their Tautut Family Bash, which will take place this evening at 5:00 PM at their campus. And also just a kind reminder and invite to the viewing public to attend the San Vicente Fiesta taking place this Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Camacho. Are there further announcements? Recognize Senator Corina Magovnia.
Thank you, Chairman. I just also wanted to let the public know that the Senate Standing Committee on Resources, Economic Development, Programs, and Gaming will be holding a public hearing next Tuesday at 1:30 PM at the Senate Chamber for the Coral Ocean Point lease. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Corina Magovnia. Are there any further? Recognize Representative Vincent Aldan.
Thank you, Chair. So we have the Green Waste Project. It was supposed to start this week, but it was canceled due to a fire breakout. But we are moving already all the tools and equipment up towards Gono. And they'll be starting next week, Monday, or, no, Monday is a Thursday, so Tuesday. And the purpose of the project is to allow everyone to avail to green waste moats for their garden or their farming.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Aldan. Any further announcement? Representative Yumo, are you going to announce the Ways and Means, the House? You're recognized.
Okay, I will. That's for the delegation, right? Not for the House?
Yes.
I mean, for the, the local delegation bill.
Local proportions, yes. Okay. That will be Tuesday. Think to our Ways and Means Chairman for the House, there is further announcement? Recognize Vincent, Representative Aldan.
Sorry again, but yeah, I just forgot the most important part. It's free. The moating is free. So anybody can come and avail. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further announcement? Ready? Thank you, members. We are now on our last item on the agenda, adjournment, and I recognize the floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and colleagues. I offer a motion to adjourn this session, subject to the call of the Chair.
There is a motion offered by our floor leader for adjournment, and it has been seconded. Discussion on the motion. Ready? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Thank you, members. The ayes have it. We are now adjourned.